All right, it's eleven thirty. Good morning, everyone. We call this meeting to order. Oh, wait, let's just wait for Commissioner Viscara. One moment. Okay, still eleven thirty. Now we'll call the meeting to order. Mauricio?
Commissioner Joseph?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Svetchen?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, great. So this was meant to be first a workshop, but we needed to add an item from last month that we did not include, which is this one resolution. Mauricio, if you want to...
Yes. So it's two-way, the resolution appointing the city's delegates, the Miami League of Cities, and an alternate to attend the meetings from May twenty twenty-four through May twenty twenty-five.
Okay, great. So normally, we do this every year, and as we're doing it again, we like to rotate this. So for this year, I'd like to appoint Vice Mayor Alex Lama as the delegate. You accept that agreement?
I'll be honored to accept it. Out of fairness, I mean, I've already been in that position already. So, you know, I think we should give an opportunity to perhaps other people that have not served. I know that Commissioner Viscara, last year, when she was appointed, she kind of, you know, kindly offered it to someone else. So I would like to either offer it to Commissioner Viscara or Commissioner Stuyvesant, just so we could all have a chance to be that representative with the league. I was representative for like two years.
Right, right, right. No, and this is, look, this is more ceremonial. All of us, all of us are allowed to go to this, and we encourage everyone. So who, Commissioner Viscara?
Thank you. I share his sentiments, and I'm really more focused on the Florida part.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
But what do you mean you're focused on the Florida part?
I'll second it.
You second what?
Okay, so there's, there's no, there's, all right. So then I will recommend Commissioner Stuyvesant for that. And then as an alternate, I'm going to place myself since I've never actually done this. So, all in favor?
But you never go?
All right.
People are?
All in favor?
Sorry, Mayor, can, we don't have a motion.
Hmm? Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. So if you're going to be a representative, don't you actually have to go sometimes?
Is the delegate not able to go, then the alternate goes. Correct.
Okay. And Mayor, just to clarify, this is not to attend the meetings per se. This is more for voting. So in the event that the appointed delegate can't make it, then the alternate has the voting authority.
Perfect.
Okay, so there has to be then communication. If you're not showing up to something, you have to let people know in plenty of time, correct?
Okay, so again, this is not necessarily to attend events. So I, unless you have another question regarding the actual appointment?
No.
Okay.
May I say something?
Of course.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, you know, when I was appointed, there was a lot of activity because COVID hit. So there was a lot of resolutions coming from the county ordinances, et cetera. So at this point, yeah, there's things that we need to vote on. If, let's say, the Miami-Dade County League of Cities is lobbying the state or lobbying the county, right, to do something. But the activity, in my opinion, has gone down significantly. Obviously, we still need a representative, but just wanted to give my comments, yeah. Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I mean, you don't have to be there. I mean, not, not everybody shows up to, to all the dinners. But, yeah, we definitely need someone because there's issues that come up from time to time where we do need to either support the county and their lobbying efforts to represent us or not.
But I'm just saying, sorry, that when I was a representative, I didn't miss one meeting because, just in case.
Understood, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A reason. So someone who takes it should be able to...
I, I agree.
Be present.
Commissioner Stuyvesant, will you be able to attend any meeting that requires a vote?
If I can make it, I will let you guys know.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, great. All right. So now for the real purpose, or rather, the initial purpose for this meeting is to discuss our operating budget, the philosophical conversation that we start off, and where we would individually like to see, you know, any changes or not changes. So I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if you wanted to present this item or if...
Yes.
Okay.
So last year, when we went through the budget, we had a very involved budget season and process with each one of you and participation. And I feel like at that point, we made a lot of significant adjustments. The budget in general was, has been running very smoothly. We have a strong and continue to maintain a strong reserve and balance in the budget. And we went through and we made some cuts to the budget. I feel like overall, if we have twenty-five thousand residents, twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine of them were very pleased with our budget and support our budget in our efforts of having a strong conservative budget, including supporting all of the events and the various projects that we did or that we do throughout the year. So really, our point, this perspective, and I believe that our mantra or approach is going to be a little bit different in that we want to hear from you very basic, basic synopsis of things you feel are important that are not captured or were not captured in this budget season that you would like to see captured for this next budget season. Keeping in mind that we have some capital projects that we have planned that are still in the process of being worked through or that have been delayed. The best example would be our Central Island drainage project. We've budgeted, we put it out to bid twice, the money has exceeded what we felt like was fair and reasonable, and therefore, we have a different approach. So there's no real reason to bring up that Central Island Drainage Project again because we're going to carry that over to the new budget.
And how much is set aside for that?
I don't recall the exact amount. Do you know off the top of your head, and the general? I know originally, we had a budgeted six.
Six and a half, and then it was twenty-five something.
Twenty-five million.
So...
Twenty-five.
Right. It was six, and then we added twenty-five. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, try to say this as nicely professionally as possible going forward. We have the experts putting together our budget, and so we don't necessarily need help with the weeds part of the budget as much as we do philosophically from you, things that you may want that we have not budgeted or captured going forward that we may or may not be able to build into this current fiscal year's budget depending upon the millage rate going forward. So with that, we'd like to hear from each one of you what your general ideas were for the budget. One of the things, it seems like a small thing, but each one of you, I believe, at some point has come to me. And we cut out giveaways, for example. We got into the weeds last year of each line item, and we cut out giveaways. It seems like a small thing, yet we've heard from the majority of you, whenever someone is visiting or whenever we have the workshops where we're giving someone some sort of award, whether it be ceremonial or not, we've been asked to put together simple things like a gift bag from the city that includes mugs and pens and things that have our city logo on that we had to cut out as part of last year that we would like to include this year. Other than that, our mantra and our mindset going forward is going to be keeping things flat and essentially the same as they were last year, with the exception of we need to add a position or two into CCS, and we also need to add a position or two into the Building Department. We've recently made an offer for the Assistant Building Official, which has been accepted, and we're also expecting to him to bring forward some new technologies with some efficiencies in that department. So from that area, I'm only expected to bring forward to you probably somewhere in the nature of four or five new positions that are either in CCS or the Building Department. Other than that, we expect things to remain the same. So from that perspective, we're looking to hear from you a very brief synopsis of your philosophy on the budget going forward for the next year.
Okay, well, first of all, I thank you for that, and I actually appreciate that we're doing it like this so that we could be televised, because I did have a few people reach out saying they can't make it, but they're going to watch it. So I'm just asking everyone to please speak into your microphone and, you know, one at a time so that those that are watching can, can hear us. And again, for those that are in the audience and those that are watching, this is a philosophical conversation. This is not us going line by line. It just gives everyone a sense of where each of us is coming from holistically. So who would like to start?
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one thing. I forgot. You all have spoken to me probably individually a couple of different times about events. So at this part, we're going to break it into two sections. The first section is going to be your philosophy about the budget, but then we're going to have a follow-up session today, once this ends, where Susan is going to give you a breakdown of our events and where you can discuss with us where or how we should approach our events.
Great. All right, thank you. And you would like to start? Please, go ahead.
Okay. So before I start, I'd like to, I have a couple of questions to ask. So regarding the millage rate, when we lower the millage rates, for every point that we lower the millage rate, how much is that actually taking out of our budget?
I believe that the total millage last year ended up equating to one point three million dollars. I'm looking at Tiffany. She's saying yes, so...
So one point three for every point that we lower the millage. Okay. So, and how much do we currently have in our budget surplus?
I'm going to ask Tiffany to come up to answer that.
Cool, my name. In unassigned fund balance, we have about fifty-five million. That's in the general fund.
General fund.
Ehm.
And how about other funds that we have access to?
Well, the other funds are restricted for certain purposes.
Right. I'm not talking about those.
Okay, so it's really going to be the general fund, and then we have our Capital Projects Fund, but those are assigned to capital projects. And then we have our Law Enforcement Trust Fund, and that's assigned to the public safety.
Okay, so basically, the city right now has fifty-five million.
Unassigned.
Unassigned. Okay, thank you.
Your work.
Okay. And we have, I know that from DESER, we have twenty-seven million approximately owing to us. That's not, that's not in that number, correct? Right. And then we have, there was another, the Miami Beach property that was just purchased, that that's going to be a future project that the city will have income from. And then we have the Bentley and others. Jane Regis, still, we have income that's, that would be in the future, correct?
Generally, yes. We have incomes from building and permits and other things, but those are offset by cost.
No, I understand.
So those are not monies that are just, you know, floating in a special reserve fund. Those are offset by hard costs for our Building Department.
Right. I understand that. But still, those numbers, in consideration of lowering the millage at any time, would be taken into consideration, correct?
Stan, may I? The, the large sums of money, I believe you're referring to, the TDR payments are, will not be due to us. They were given an option to defer those payments.
Right.
We don't anticipate seeing those for probably a good five years.
Okay, and we have others as well that...
All future years out, yes.
For years, right. Okay. All right. So that's, that's regarding the millage. Now regarding the parks, the acreage in our park system, are we in compliance currently with our master plan?
Yes. When we calculate the beach area, we are in compliance with our comp plan.
But the beach is not our property.
But it's recreation open space, so it's, it's allowed.
The county, so it's really not a fair assessment to include the beach.
It is allowable because it is recreation open space within our boundaries that our residents can use, so...
So if the state were to come to us and say, "How much acreage do you have in your parks compared to other cities that don't have beaches?", we would be in compliance?
I would have to go look at that, but I...
Okay.
And, and it fluctuates. It depends on individual cities' comp plans.
But if the, if the beach is not included, we could be well below what we're required to have?
I will, I will check and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. And if that's the case, then we would have to make some provisions to increase our acreage, correct?
If we're not in compliance with our comp plan, we would have to. But unless if someone privatized the beach, we are still allowed to use that as recreation open space in our calculations. Is that correct, Alan?
That's my understanding. You don't have to own the recreational area, and she's simple, as long as it's available to the public.
Okay. So is that a gray area or is that, you know, in stone?
I mean, we'll double-check, but that's my understanding. Otherwise, it would be unfeas, it wouldn't be feasible in a lot of areas, including counties and areas that have large state parks or even this situation here. I mean, the acreage you have on the beach, you would never be able to replicate that for city-owned property. I mean, you'd have to demolish an incredible amount of buildings to be able to replicate what the beach provides in the way of acreage for recreational, open to the public.
Okay, let's see what we end up with. I'll look forward to those results. Okay, so now regarding, so we said we're going to speak about events at another time, is that it?
Under.
Okay. So regarding the way that the departments deal with commissioners regarding, and the mayor regarding the budget, I would like to have the commissioners included more in paperwork that we receive as to what goes into the, the numbers, if that would be possible. I feel like I'm asked to make decisions on numbers when I don't have full documentation as, as to the thought process that went into those decisions.
And I think the way that we're going to handle that this year is because we've given you all the information that you need. You're welcome to review it at any time. If you have any questions, then I think what we'll do is, if you will submit the questions to me in writing, then we'll provide you with some sort of link where you can find that information. But all of the information for the budget is available to everyone, including the public.
Thank you. That, that we listen out, but I'll...
Okay, but just, Commissioner Joseph, do you have any sort of philosophical view that you'd like to share with, with the staff and the managers so they know what your priority is as far as what you'd like to see happen in the city? It's not already happening. You don't have to. I'm just asking.
I'll come back to that.
All right, anyone who would like to go next?
I can go next.
Okay, please, go ahead.
So I have a question, Stan. What would be your recommendation with the millage rate?
Can... We're still doing an assessment, and I think the first step is to find out philosophically what it is that you all want, keeping in mind that we plan on holding the line regarding our budget, especially concerning adding new positions. So we're really going to look at the millage rate closely, and once we gather all the data, then I can give you the information regarding that. And I know that's important to all of you.
Yeah, and I would like to see it continue going down. I do have a question about, how much was the capital fund restricted of twenty twenty-two, and how much was it twenty twenty-three? Can Tiffany please answer that question?
Tiffany?
Okay, can you repeat that question?
The capital fund of twenty twenty-two, of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. The total, yeah, how many millions, around twenty-something?
The capital projects?
Yes, that we had restricted, yeah.
So for twenty-two, twenty-three, we did an assigned, I'm sorry, that was for twenty-three, twenty-four. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, I believe our total...
Let me just...
Yeah, please.
See if I can...
Because I want to compare with also twenty-three, twenty-four. Please.
Yeah, Tiffany, ask that again. Did you have another question? Why try to find that one?
So while we wait for that, Commissioner Stuyvesant, is there anything that you wanted to bring up as well?
The idea of comparing those two numbers is that, one thing I want to see stop doing is to put the money in the capital funds, and I'm going to say why. If we have the money in the general fund, that money is getting invested and is generating interest. That interest goes to the general fund, and it can be used for whatever other purposes. However, when we have the money restricted in the capital fund, then the interest that is generating also gets restricted. So let's give an example. If we had ten million dollars for parking recreations in the capital fund, any money, any interest that those ten millions are creating, then get automatically restricted to be used specifically for parking recreations. So financially, I would like to understand what is the thought process to restrict even the future money that we are generating with interest for a specific cause, okay? So that is a question that I have, that I would like to find an answer. And my recommendation would be, instead of restricting that money and the future money that money is generating, to keep it in the general fund. And then we can clearly have unrestricted future capital fund account, and the money that is generating, it can go anywhere else. And then that easily can give us the, the money necessary to continue lowering the millage rate and giving, even if it's a small break, but a break to our residents. So if I'm not mistaken, I don't have the numbers. I hope Tiffany can find it. For, in one year, we basically double our capital fund. And I don't believe that is a good financial, fiscal way of using the money, the money that we have plus the money that we're generating. So my point is that I would like to see, to stop the practice of, if we could have to continue, get an explanation why we are even restricting the future money that are, that, that we are creating through the interest. So you have the numbers?
Yes. Okay, so for twenty-one, twenty-two, our budgeted expenditures in capital projects was fifty-two million.
No, no, the twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three, twenty-four. Yeah. Those are the two numbers, the last two fiscal years. Yeah, yeah, to compare.
I thought you said twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
No.
And then for...
So just so I understand, what I'm hearing you say is, because, again, I want to remind everyone, we don't have these conversations outside this room, you want to be able to have more flexibility with how Tiffany uses the interest that we gain.
Clearly.
Okay, okay.
So we don't restrict those funds for whatever money it is that... So if we keep the money in the capital fund, then we are restricting even the future money that we are generating.
I see.
If we keep that in the general fund, then the future money can be used for any things. And remember that now everything is budgeted for. Like, for example, big example, when COVID happened and we hit, we could never imagine what was going to be the impact of the pandemic. So the point is that we are restricting ourselves with the money that we are generating. Right now, we are, the, the interests are very high, and apparently, they're going to be continuing going up. So I don't want to see us restricting ourselves with the money that we are making, if that makes any sense.
Tiffany, can you clarify, please?
Yes, so our accounting is based upon what's called pooled cash, okay? So the cash portion is not allocated to any fund. It's pooled, and it's in a money market account. It's in various instruments. So we are getting the interest on those funds that have not been spent. As long as they're in the account, okay, even though we budgeted twenty-six million, whatever we budgeted, we haven't spent them, so we are still earning interest regardless of how we've assigned it for a budget, if that makes sense.
And so the interest is not then attached necessarily to that item?
And then we allocate based upon the actual cash balances. We allocate that to each of the funds based upon the equity within the fund, without getting too technical.
So the interest moves the general fund?
The interest is allocated accordingly within all the funds based upon their equity balances. So it's an allocation. It's a true allocation. It's an accounting thing. We get, you know, a million dollars in interest, but then it gets allocated to each of the funds based upon their equity.
Okay, so whatever it was created from the capital fund money goes to capital fund as well?
Yes, the interest.
Correct.
The interest gets allocated.
Basically, what, which is my point, then, the money that is created, the money that is already the capital fund, then it's going to get allocated to that account as well.
Correct.
And then it's still restricted.
The unspent.
Correct.
And it's assigned. It's not restricted, so there is a difference there.
Can you please clarify that so that...
So, yes, restricted means you cannot move it out of there. It must be used for, so building, building permit fees, so forth and so on. They must be used for building. That is a state statute.
Mm-hmm, right.
Assigned means, okay, this is what we are allocating. This is the piece we are moving over for capital projects, but it's not a statute. It's not, it's not law. It's not anything, we could easily say, okay, so now we're, we're, we're not doing that, so we could move those funds back over because it's just an assignment. This is what we're saying, that we're, we're carving out this piece for capital projects, if that makes sense.
So it's not restricted?
It is not restricted.
Okay, all right. Does that answer?
Once, once the money is in the capital fund, what it takes to take it from there to the general fund? We have to pass an ordinance.
Correct. So that's you as a government body saying, okay, we're not doing this or that project, and so we do not need those funds to remain in the capital projects. But understand, we don't, even though we budget, so we budgeted twenty-five, twenty-six million as a transfer out to capital projects, we don't actually do it until we spend those monies. So it's not like monies are just sitting in capital projects not being utilized. They stay in the general fund. When we need them, we then will do a budget amendment to move them over. So that twenty-six million that was budgeted, no transfer has happened so far this year.
So, okay, so wait, so out of the fifty-five million that I was told is in the general fund, twenty-six million would have gone to the sewer project?
Potentially, if we did it.
So then we actually would have had that much less in the general fund to consider for a millage lowering?
That is correct.
So that wasn't explained earlier?
Well, so, that's another thing. So we don't need to continue growing the capital fund, which is philosophically what I would like to see, and keeping the money in the general fund. At the end of the day, like, we know even to move from one side to the other, it has to come to us for approval. So why to put it in the capital fund in the first place when we can continue keeping it in the general fund and then having the, the potential that we have a little more of leniency on where to allocate that money, and it's not going to be restricted to the capital fund? So that is, that is why last year I was against, and I voted against the project, against the budget, because to see only one fiscal year, twenty-six million, like I said, it's almost double, to go to capital fund, it is... it is fiscally, in my view, unnecessary. When we can continue having that money in the general fund, and then if we need it for anything else, you guys will come and request to the commission to allocate that money to any project or anything else that it comes, even budgeted or not, because like I said, things happen that we cannot foresee, so that.
Understood.
But doing that, you could end up in an overdrawn situation. I mean, another city that's not.
Okay, so I think that we need to stick to the philosophy here, because I think that, you know, you're the expert, and we need best practices and potentially just.
And we have to have a balanced budget.
Right.
So with your saying not moving the funds, then our balance, then our budget doesn't balance. So if we have these capital projects that we're saying we're going to spend money for, you gotta balance it with the revenues and the expenditures to have a balanced budget. Otherwise, we say, okay, we're just not budgeting for a project, even though we plan on doing it.
Mr. City Attorney?
And you have to be careful too, because if you're, if you're projecting, or you know you're gonna be spending X amount of dollars on a particular project or for particular purposes, you have to project that in your budget. And you can't artificially inflate your general fund artificially, because of that, to reduce the millage rate, because that's disingenuous. So you, you have to accurately project that expenditure in your budget, so leaving it in a general fund is not accurate. So you have to set it aside, at least from an assignment standpoint, because you're anticipating that expenditure.
Yeah, but we doubled. In one fiscal year, we doubled. We assigned around twenty seven million dollars. How much of that money?
Million and twenty two, twenty three to fifty three million and twenty three, twenty four, but that was primarily because of the Central Island Drainage.
Well, which is what I'm saying, we almost doubled, you know, what is assigned in the capital fund. And we need to also be careful with that, because we don't also want to just to balance the budget, because we have to. And because also we are always balancing up, it gotta be balanced, clearly. But also, we are just, usually, every, when we go to how much actually we really spent during the fiscal year, usually is exactly what we budgeted, more or less?
It's usually less.
Correct, historically, which is my point, exactly. So we usually calculated it'll be higher, because we don't know anything that can happen, etc. And it's because it's best practices, five, ten percent, etc. So right now, which is my point with the millage rate, you know, and like you said, the impact is so large, one point three, one point five millions, and then we get caught up on, this is so big or so important. Well, yes, it is for the, for the resident, and if we can continue lowering what we've been doing historically, knowing that at the end of the year, we're gonna spend less money than we budgeted for, and we be more careful with the capital project, having a balanced budget, that is what philosophically I would like to see.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Biscar or Vice Mayor?
No, no, pinch.
Okay. Let me just like get in my head here, so I, I have a list of the things that I would like to see. I went over what we, what our wish list was last year, and and I've been throughout the past few months, like reaching out to, keeping track and sending the city manager and the deputy city manager emails. So I have a question, these papers that were on our desk, what is this?
Um, that's for the second part of this meeting.
Okay, so because I see on here the adaptive beach days, which was my number one on my list, so I don't know if that came from my, okay. So, or you guys were ahead of me, okay. So one of the things that, you know, in terms of things that we could be doing better, I think that we can be servicing our, we could doing, we could be doing more for our disabled or compromised, like our elderly, and also like our veterans, our injured veterans, or we could be doing more for that, and one of the things that I like, that Miami Beach does, they have this adaptive beach days, and I think they do it like once a month, and we, whether we could join with them or just borrow the idea, which is basically, you have a day where you, where people can come and you have the extra equipment, you know, like the, the, let's say, the bicycles or the, or the wheelchairs with the really big wheels, or you have staff on hand to help people enjoy the ocean the way that we take for granted, that maybe other people can't. And we maybe can extend that. I, you mentioned something, Susan, recently about giving like a preview to, invitation to the families that are voluntarily registered with us on autism. Just having better, better outreach for, for that population. I think we, we don't really have a whole lot going on right now, and I'd like to see more of that. On the art side of things, there's a festival, it's, it's called Old Miami, that's like a poetry festival, and it's really nice. And you see it in different parts, parts of the county, it's a Dade County thing. And I think that's something, we, the PAC, it hasn't really been active. So I don't know if that's something that could tie into those funds, but there's a lot of variety in the activities that we could do with that. Like one of the cities does like Poetry in Pajamas, which is like an even similar to the reading that we've done under the stars. But it's, it's a poetry thing, it's with families. There's one that does a scavenger hunt, which I was thinking, we can connect maybe to the Sunny Spaces, that's already a scavenger. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's one that I think is kind of funny, but maybe it would just create litter, it's parking tickets. And you, there's things that they look like parking tickets, so you get it, and, and then when you, it's not really a parking ticket, it's just poetry, you know? I know those will end up on the floor, but, but I, I like that idea, if we could have something like that, where, where we could highlight our particular diversity, like maybe have like the same poem in like English, Russian, and, and Spanish or something like that. So I think that kind of participation, we always looked at art like, like maybe statues or stat, not statute. I can't say the word statue anymore, statues, sculptures, and, and paintings. But we haven't really looked at literature, or maybe like a Shakespeare in the Park or something like that. I would like something like that. The other thing is, on the legislative end, we started pushing this last year more, and I, and I think we made progress, but I, I'd like to see there's legislative conferences, like the FLC, we all go to the one in August, but there's also one in December. I think interested commissioners should get that training as well. And also, on the, on the legislative side, in speaking to our lobbyists, you know, the, just sticking to the FLC is is kind of late in the game, if you guys have gone, by the time we get there, it's, a lot of things have already happened. And it's very late to start advocating if we follow the FLC calendar. So our lobbyists recommended that we go up earlier, and maybe have our own meetings or whatever. So again, that's part of the advocacy piece. We've been improving, but I think going forward, if we're gonna push harder, we're gonna need to go there more. Let's see. We've, I've also been talking, an idea from last year, which is the, the water taxi, that idea has been going around for a while. I thought, I was thinking about it in terms of just like going to FIU en masse, but I was told that's really not a sustainable thing by itself. But if we pair up with Aventura, who I know is always, is also thinking about it, or other cities, maybe that's another form of transportation that, that we can use. I'm thinking about school, but I'm not sure how that would play out. Like, I don't know how Aventura would use it, or how Haaland might use it, but I would like to explore that. I don't know how feasible it is. Let's see, the charitable giving piece, not just the giveaways. I mean, I understand fiscal responsibility, I like, but I, but I think there's a difference between that and behaving like we're in the Great Depression, because it is the, the residents' money, it is our taxpayers' money, and we, they should be able to get things they enjoy in return, you know, not just services, but something nice in return, right, like the events and things like that, it's part of it. I don't, I don't, I don't see why we can't bring back, again, with parameters. So even if we can say, okay, no more than a thousand dollars, we can put a rule around the amount, but we can be helpful, we're in the position to be helpful. Let's see, the police athletic league got off the ground, it's still, we're not active yet, but I'd like to know, you know, how that's gonna be funded going forward, I don't have a number for that. And with regards to our teenagers, I was thinking maybe like some kind of a, I call it like adulting presentations, but there's things that, that maybe we could be doing for them, like talking to them about college applications, or maybe like the options of military service, or ROTC, that health and fitness, career planning, social media norms, whatever, you know, whatever's in their world, maybe we can, like, like the teen version of the roundtable for the seniors, right? Let's see. The comprehensive plan, I'd like to see that completed, and whatever adjustments we have to make, or whatever that is, I know we've been working on it, I'd like to see that be finalized. And, let me see, and I think that's it. I think that's it for me, yeah.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yep, okay, so, a lot of things, a lot of things.
Susan, you have a paper?
No, a lot of things in general, you know, coming from all of us. And so the, the way I see the budget, right, is obviously, the major expenses are capital improvements, the capital projects. So I think that us as a commission and as a staff, I think we need to take what happened to the Central Island Drainage project as, as a lesson, and as a, let's say, new way of moving forward perhaps, on things that we know that need to get done. So, you know, with, with anything that has to do with capital improvements, I'll start with the central drainage project, okay? Central Island Drainage Project, and some of the refurbishments that our facilities need. I think that we should take a look at that, and if we know that it needs to get done, you know, move quick on that, because obviously inflation keeps ticking up, so we'll save ourselves a lot of money that way. You know, obviously, one of our duties is to save the residents and the city money. And also, another, another of our duties is to give the residents the best service we could give. So I think that goes hand in hand, we'll have more money, and we'll be able to spend it more wisely, and perhaps be able to plan for, for other things. You know, one of those things, I think it has to do with, with capital improvements too, is that, you know, something I have in my mind is the Pelican, Pelican Park Extension, right? There's a need for more activities, there's a need for more sports. I mean, basically, that facility right now is, is small, we're bursting at the seams with that. So that's something else that I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about. What else? You know, our parks, obviously, eventually, we're gonna have to start refurbishing those or redesigning those. Whether it's a big redesign or a smaller redesign, that's still to be determined. Obviously, we have the Parks and Rec master plan, but that could be flexible, I need to make that point, that it needs to be flexible. And we could take some of these parks on a case by case basis, just to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. The police station, I think perhaps this is not something that is gonna happen from one year to another, or even three years to, the next three years is gonna take a while, but I think that needs to be on the, on the backs of our mind, and it needs to be something that needs to be pursued. And let me, I'm just checking my notes, give me one second here. Something else that's, that's important too, so we need to make sure that we are fully staffed in all of the departments, we were able to achieve that with the police department. I think that we could see some of those benefits right now. You just spoke about the building department stand, so I think that we need to prioritize that as well. I know that is very difficult right now to hire qualified people, or to hire anybody at this point, it's very hard. So let's try to find ways on how to perhaps hire these, find these qualified people and bring them over to the city. Team programming, I'm, I'm happy that I see you here on this list, and I know that we're gonna talk about the list of events later on, but I'm happy to see more programming, and I think that overall, we've been doing a better job at targeting teens and catering to their needs. I'm very happy with what's been happening with the senior citizens. I think that the senior citizens are very, very happy with what we've been doing for them. I mean, you, they, they come up to us, they're super happy, so good job on that, that's a round of applause to the, to the staff. So kudos to you. And then that's about it. Oh, charities, charities. So I, I, I think that we're in a good position, there's always a need, you know? I don't think we should be, let's say, giving out money, handing out money just because, but I think when there's a need, we are in a position to, you know, help someone, especially, you know, residents or entities that need that. Because that way, if they're helping residents of our community, I think that's a win-win situation for, for, for everybody. So I think we should take another look at charities, perhaps go to a model how we had discussed before, where each of us gets a, a, let's say, an amount of money that we could donate to a charity or charities of our choosing, but obviously, we would need to come up with a criteria that makes sense, is fair, and it's, it's fair for everybody, for, for, for the charity. So that's, that's pretty much my philosophy, or my, what I have in my mind. But yeah, we should concentrate on capital projects, see if we could best, you know, manage those and move forward with, with the ones that we absolutely need or necessary, so we don't have to, you know, be here two years down the road and saying, oh, this cost double now. So I think we need to learn that lesson and, and apply it.
All right, now, I have my list now.
All right, you go ahead, and I'll go last, go ahead.
Thank you, okay, so, okay, so, transportation. I would like to see something better for transportation with what happened with the better bus network, we know how it affects our people. So we need more resources, we need a different type of vehicles. I really would need to make sure that, especially our citizens that are the most vulnerable, which is are the seniors and the teens that they don't drive yet, I want to see more ideas about what we can do for them in transportation. Also about the teens, and piggybacking on about the legislation and the different conference. When I go to this conference all over the place, I see all with the youth committees from the cities. And they're investing a lot in them and creating the, the new way for leaders that they're gonna be sitting down here in the future. I don't think we do enough to, to, to bring this youth and represent our city. We have a lot of talented children, and kids, and teenagers that they could assist to those conferences. There are other ways to participate, they have different competitions, they have different events. So I would like to see somehow how invest a little bit more in, in, in this group of young adults or teenagers. Also, which is something that I've been pursuing for a long time, is to finally develop something under the causeway. I truly believe that we want to, we need to give a safer space for the people to walk and to do exercises. We can maybe with such a big investment, make a track system there, there is parking. So the people, instead of being running or walking around Collins Avenue, they can do it in a safe area. So I would really would like to see some resources, a little bit more aggressive maybe conversation with the FDOT to be able to develop something under the causeway. About sports and recreation, and I wanna say the same thing, we have been doing a very good job with the seniors. Thank you, guys, like you guys are such a good team and continue doing it, I see them happy, I love to go bingo with them, it's such a good thing. But about the, the sports, and again, when I go to different competitions and I see many other cities and many other clubs, they have more resources or like better like uniforms and better equipment than what we have. So maybe we have to put a little bit of money there to be in better leagues, etc., really focusing for servicing our residents. But for the team uniforms, I, I remember back in the days when we used to receive the full uniform. Right now, we are sometimes just getting the shirt. So, again, I know everything costs money, so don't get me wrong, but we. Right now, we are sometimes just getting the shirt. So again, I know everything costs money, so don't get me wrong, but we can allocate resources to that give them also some sense of belonging that they want to show off and be better, you know. It's just like a mind thing as well. Um, to develop some resources for the parents, which I am already working on that, but to continue doing that. Uh, about the building department, eh, I'm gonna research this a little bit better, but I believe the city of Southside is making some kind of adjustment for the building that they need a forty year recertification to have no fees, like zero fees. So um, maybe we can do something similar. Um, I spoke with Alan about this in a few months ago. But maybe we can revisit how they are doing it, and if it would be feasible for us also to help the, the, the building that are going through these eh, re- eh, certifications. We had a conversation again, but don't forget about the EV stations that with the Florida Power and Light or whoever, if they can build more, we need more. We had that need. And we don't wanna see fights because of the EV stations. And last but not least, um, about the donations and the charities. Uh, yes, I do believe that we are in a position to help eh, certain groups that they do good for their community. Um, I was very disappointed when we were for the first time in, I think, many years. We didn't give the donation that we used to go, eh, give to the social eh, city, social senior citizens of South Florida. Uh, I know they come with that money and we've been doing it. And I know that we don't want to make sure that they're always gonna get the money from the same organization. But I don't see anything wrong with that. Uh, and, and they do serve our seniors. And they were very active during the pandemic. Calling them and making sure that they were not eh, eh, feeling so lonely, et cetera.
Both actually voted for it.
Yeah, yeah, correct, which is my point. Like maybe we had to revisit and we are in a position of helping organizations that they are doing good thing for our residents. Or at least for our city. It can be the turtle people, the seniors, whatever, but keeping it local to the, to help our residents. So that is my philosophical, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you wanna add something?
I have a few.
Writing, so please go ahead.
Yes, I, so um, I would like to uh, see something regarding, we have a lot of talented uh, residents, uh, students, um, who would be interested in having a student choir in the city. That's something that I've been, um, that's been brought to my attention. Also, uh, we have a lot of talented residents that would like to see um, some type of city orchestra. Which um, I know the residents um, would be thrilled to have. Um, we have the Golden Beach Civic Center opening soon. Um, I'm interested to see how that's organized and what they have incorporated in that building. And maybe for us to use that as a model going forward. Um, and also any structure that we do happen to build, I would like to, and play, um, to have. Um, because uh, take Gateway for example, where um, I know the structure is not able to sustain a second floor. I, uh, going forward, I'd like to make sure that we have um, you know, architecture, architectural plans that uh, take into account future needs. Um, and with pilings that could, um, you know, sustain additional floors for the future. I'd like to um, be sure we have a new um, director of our code enforcement. I'd like to make sure that he has an increased budget in order to um, to assist in our code enforcement. We have issues with uh, vehicles that are blocking the right lanes on Collins. Uh, I'd like assistance with that. I know that our police can't be everywhere, but certainly our code enforcement can assist with that. Well, let's see. Oh, also, I, I had brought this up when I first ran for election. And at the time, we had it, we had a state embudsman, but right now he's kind of disappeared. So I would like to have some provision with the city where we have a full-time either retired attorney or a young attorney, uh, full-time to assist condos uh, condo residents with questions, not for the city to be involved, but at least to answer questions and assist them on also a philosophical basis. I think that would be quite helpful to uh, condo residents. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. So I um, thank you all of you for, for all that input, cause I agree with a lot of what you're saying. Um, my philosoph- philosophy is um, foremost is relying on the experts. I, I don't wanna see any more studies, any more consultants, you know, we, you, you all, uh, you know, you have this job to do. We hope that uh, you're, you're making a competitive salary and we increase those salaries and we want to make sure or at least from my point of view, that we allow you to do that. So that we're not micromanaging, because that's not our role. Uh, for, for me, it really is about giving you the tools that you need, but specifically not outsourcing. Really allowing you to come back to us and if to Vice Mayor's point, if there's a project that needs to be done, you know, uh, recommend for us to do that sooner rather than later. Um, regarding some of the other things that were mentioned by the commission, uh, I'd like to see more community focused planning. Things that involve more of the community's input in a way that makes sense and not necessarily by surveys. But you know, how do you interact with them in a way that you, we're coming to them? I, I love the idea of being more inclusive with the beach, you know, for a few years ago, I know we discussed finding ways to have uh, eh, children that have autism, how can they enjoy the parks? Um, that's in, you know, safe for them. And with that being said, I think that we have plenty of parks. Um, and I think this is a great opportunity for us now that the Parks Master Plan is done to allow you all to come back to us and say what you think is the best use of those parks. Given the philosophy of understanding, you know, who was going to be using that. Um, I'd like to also see efficiencies across departments. Um, and I'm not saying this doesn't necessarily happen, but I'd like to understand better how that's happening. So that if we have people that are assigned, for instance, at the parks, um, for whatever reason, to potentially be, you know, cleaning or whatever else they're doing, that if they see something going on that's not specifically attached to their job, that they're able to somehow be cross-trained so they can help in that capacity um, as well. I don't know if we ever did get to the point of having those additional parks people at the parks uh, that we had approved last year, um, and, and what exactly their role was and how did that work? If you can just.
We increased the park staff and if we can fill every position, the goal is to get back to where we were, where they are. Cross-training their, their enforcing rules, but also cleaning the restrooms and pressure washing and doing things like that so that they're not just sitting there enforcing rules, but we have them doing both. And then they have direct contact with code. If it's something code and police, if it's anything beyond what they can handle.
Okay, great. Um, and, and obviously I think that uh, it goes without saying, but I'll say that the priority is safety. So whatever we can do to, to increase, um, and it's, it's increased, you know, threefold, I think. But more of that and communicating in a better way so that our residents feel more comfortable. Um, I think that they see more PD, but whatever else we can do to encourage that. Um, and then standard of, of living, you know, um, things that we can do that are small to, to help our residents really appreciate that they live in such an amazing city, whether that be adding to the uniforms or you know, doing things that are extra special that perhaps other cities are doing. Uh, I don't know how much you all go to look at what other cities are doing. Um, I would also like to see sort of more staff walking around. And I'm not talking about PD, but just really walking around and seeing it from a different point of view, a perspective that our residents see. And uh, you know, really understanding what the accountability is. So when we have a project, for instance, and I'm, you know, I'm gonna bring this up, the, the, the Guan Margolis Park. You know, once we start that project, how do we, how do we ensure that it comes to a point where it's finished and that we don't have residents coming to us, you know, with questions or complaints? Um, so that we have an understanding of, of uh, when something is complete or when something needs more uh, um, resources. Um, going back to what I said earlier, getting a, a way of uh, incorporating and including people. I had said this before and we talked about this earlier. Having of uh, a system in place where residents can give feedback, not necessarily what they think about events, but what they would like to see. Uh, to Commissioner Viscara's point, I, I have had a lot of people come wanting to do things that are theater-related. Um, to uh, Commissioner Joseph's point, there's been a lot more adults that have been wanting to get um, added to programming. Uh, an example is the volleyball, the, the adult volleyball uh, league. I had no idea there was so much interest. And I know that there's are plenty of adults that play instruments and that are uh, in addition to being artists, that are also, you know, poets. Um, uh, I'd like to see if possible, now this goes back to uh, what Commissioner Simmsen said about, you know, being uh, fiscally responsible. I wanna make sure that we're fiscally responsible. So I'm not gonna give a list of things that I'd like to see. I want me, rely on you all to come back to us and make it work. Based on this giant list that we gave you. But um, you know, including our community, one of the things that I think we could do better is include small businesses. Um, Adventure Marketing Council does a great job with Adventure. And I would love for us to help them include more of our small businesses, so they can have more ribbon cuttings or whatever it is that they do in Adventure that we can do here. And looking maybe at things from a different perspective, I know that we give you a lot of our feedback based on whoever is speaking to us. But often it's the loudest voices that you all are hearing. And uh, you know, I would like to see how you can come back to us and let us know what you all are hearing. Because it's the staff that is talking to people every single day. Um, and, and to create an environment where we can get more of that information so that we literally aren't just walking around trying to get feedback. You know, we lit- we pay people to get that feedback. And I'd like to, I'd like to know what it is they're hearing, what's working, what's not. Um, and then finally, having a system that allows for some sort of metric. How much is it costing us to hold an event per person? So that we know that, for instance, events like the city anniversary or the Halloween event, those are huge. Um, and those are definitely something that, that I feel are worth it. But how much is it costing us? Uh, compared to, you know, one of my favorites, the bingo event. You know, how much is it costing us to have the teen events versus, you know, the egg scramble? You know, how, how is it can we, that we can balance some of that? Um, and what is it that you think works best? I'd like to really hear more from you all as to what you are recommending, what you strongly feel uh, we should be focusing on, but with a metric attached to it. Okay.
Just wanted to.
Please, go ahead.
So I would like to look into. Commissioner, could you turn on your, your microphone, please? Yes, um, I would like to uh, have the city building department look into if, whether there's any way that Gateway Center, the first floor can be reconfigured in any way. I know there's one workout room where we have exercise classes, but it's over full. And there is an absolute need for another, at least room that size in that building. If there is anything that can be done to uh, make that happen.
Okay, so, yes, wait one second. Wait, wait. What?
One more thing.
Go ahead.
Please, can we refurbish some of these bathrooms? Um, uh, ta- yeah, Town Center, uh, Guan Margolis. Yeah, the ventilation also is, is poor too, yeah.
Well, I think that's part of the, that's part of the whole parks plan is to, yeah, to, to please. You, you all know.
But, but let, let's not wait because then, I mean.
No, not wait.
Yeah, can we start with the bathrooms?
Uh, okay.
I'd actually brought this up previously because.
We all did.
Yeah, there's rusted.
No, we are, we, yes.
I thought that it been corrected previously.
Well, it's, it's an ongoing issue. We live by the ocean. So, all right, so what, uh?
Mayor, before Susan, before you jump in, I just wanted to mention, you know, a lot of the things that you're talking about. Um, an orchestra, adding a full-time position. Giving money to charities, bathroom remodeling, adaptive beach events. You know, developing the causeway. All of those things require one unique thing, and that's money. So you're wanting a lot of things and you're wanting us to cut back the budget and you want us to cut back the millage. We have to understand where is that money coming from. And I'm not aware of anyone saying, oh, they've looked at their savings account, I have too much money in savings. Yet I hear that a lot here. We have a lot of money in savings, we're a rich city. We've heard that we have fifty-five million in reserves. Twenty-five, let's say twenty-five million of that, we're gonna go to Central Island Drainage, which we all know is a problem. Let's say that that happened, that's not a lot. So then we have twenty-five million left. Well, one hurricane, even though we have some money set aside for hurricanes, could completely wipe our budget out. Okay, then you're all looking at raising our substantu- our millage substantially. So I'm, what I'm trying to get you to understand, and we're having a philosophical discussion is, you really can't have it both ways. So if we're holding the line on the budget, you've just given me probably about twenty things you wanna add. We need to go back and see where we can work and make some things around and accommodate some of those things. But some of them are also big-ticket, ongoing items. So that's the first thing to consider. The second part of this, and in my discussions with Tiffany, she constantly reminds me that what's helped us in these past two years has been receiving that ten million dollars from ARPA. Um, the COVID money that's helped offset our budget. This is gonna be the first year, even though it only seems like a small amount in the millage that we are dipping into our reserves to cover some of our operating costs. So I want you to keep that in mind. And then as we talk about events, I've heard often from many of you that, well, this person wants to donate their time and this event will be free. There are no free events. There's nothing that we're going to do in this city that's truly going to be free. Because we also have to, we have to set the room up. I have to have staff there. We have to empty out the garbage. If we're providing even something as simple as water or some type of snacks, those are all things that hit our budget. So we create line items to track every bit of money that we spend. You're welcome to see any of those line items. But the events alone, in my discussion with Susan earlier, I think we have ninety-nine events. Susan, is that right? We have ninety-nine events in the city. So how many events is too many? And there are some events that we need to have. I'll give you an example. We wanna have a grand opening for our meditation garden. We have so many events scheduled in between now. It's ready to open, it's ready to have a dedication. We have so many events scheduled that we can't schedule a grand opening, I think until the end of May. So adding just one more event, then that's the hundredth event that the city is going to have. We really want you, and I'm gonna let Susan go through this with you, prioritize some of the events. And what I would like for you to do frankly is cut out some of the events that you feel are not necessary. So that, and give us some of the events that are truly important to you that we need to have. But everything, there's a cause and effect element to everything we do as we go through the budget. And I think the staff has done a great job of holding the line. We're gonna really try to hold the line again. But those are all things I consider when we look at the millage. And I wanna get away from the mindset of being a rich city. Because I want us to remember the West Coast, that one event wiped out a bridge. And something like that, we only had a small skirmish of an event that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars where we had to close the city down for a couple of days.
So let's change the wording to fiscally sound. How's that?
So so my approach is to be, I want to have that money and I want to be conservative, as I always have regarding your money and the taxpayers' money. I don't wanna consider our savings as well. You know, we've got plenty. I want us to be fully prepared for any disaster that we may have here. And when you have things that you bring up that are equally important to all of you, events that you wanna have, I wanna be able to have the money to go in and get that approved by you. So philosophically, So philosophically, that's the mindset.
Okay, and, and I can, I appreciate that, and I think that we all understand it. I think this, this was more sort of of a brain dump and, you know, what it is we'd like to see. I, I, that's what I'm going back to. You all need to come back to us and say what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And I know it's a challenge because we all said very different things, but I need to rely, and I will rely on your expertise. And for you to tell us how this is going to work or how it's not going to work. Commissioner Simson, you wanted to-
Yeah, okay, so first of all, I do speak with the residents every day. Every day, many times, many places. So I know the staff speak with them also, but I believe we also have a very good sentiment of what the residents want, not only the staff. Second, I believe that we need to be, we clearly have to be more responsible with the money. But, which is my point, why are we locking ourselves so much money in capital that is not being used? And in being responsible and spending over two-hundred thousand dollars in one anniversary party, that is not being responsible. We can, we can scale that down tremendously and still give a very nice event. My proposal is having it every five years and then doing something small every year or, or during Fourth of July. But two-hundred, like, in no time, it's going to be a quarter of a million dollar only in that evening event. Then, coming back to, to the capital projects that we didn't even do, like, for example, we put a lot of money in creating something for the fleet maintenance that it was going to be under the causeway. Where are we with that? Did we do anything with that?
We had, we had set it aside when we were talking about putting something under there, so it got delayed, but we didn't, I don't believe we funded that.
Exactly. No, no, it's there, it's in the capital funds. It is, it was around a hundred and whatever thousand, we were going to build the whole facility to do the fleet maintenance, which is one that is on top of my mind. The same thing, like, we're talking about being responsible. And we are spending millions of dollars in Tony Romas. Instead of creating revenue, we are spending and spending, which was never the, and now we're talking also that we want to, we're going to, it, it was decided by you guys to put the building department there. But also then, we're going to build a new police station when we're going to have all that space for them. Or we're just going to hire people to fill that space. So we need to make sure that one decision that we take has going to affect the other. Because when we decide to be spending millions and millions for the building department and Tony Romas, I think that is going to impact the future construction of the police department. So I understand, we have to be responsible with the money. I don't believe we are doing the best that we can. But, and, and we need to move into that direction.
Okay, Mr. Senior Manager.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to some of the complaints. First, or, or some of the comments, the first thing I wanted to talk about was the anniversary party last year, because we've discussed that a lot. In all of the years, I've been here for eleven and a half years, that was the event that I received the most positive feedback concerning the event, including from all of you. It was one of the events that I attended. The drone show, the food, having the event on the, the beach. I saw speak, our residents were happy. I'm only aware myself, because I had a lot of people that came up to me and thanked me, of one person complaining about the event, one. Since that time, then all of a sudden, there's questions about the budget. We need to hear about it, we want to hear about, I want to know what the budget is first, I want to approve the events. Okay, no problem, we brought that back to you. This year, at our last meeting, you approved essentially the exact same thing for the exact same amount of money. So I'm not seeing that there's any problem with that part of it. Let's talk about Tony Romas. Tony Romas, what we have now is, you know, our space needs on, from the building, the building as a whole, it was not built functionally to have the number of people we have. By placing the building department into Tony Romas, the research that we've done, the building department's going to be paying us rent from here forward, and it's going to be a substantial amount of rent. So that's rent guaranteed going forward. It's not an amount of money that's not being captured or not, not being considered. The other part of it is, we've also built in a cafe that's going to bring us in a substantial amount of money, rent. My anticipation is going to be that the rent between the building department and the cafeteria are going to, or the cafe, are going to exceed the amount of monies that we collected from Tony Romas. Now, while the cafe is questionable in terms of the future, the building department is not. That's our building department. So they are going to be paying us rent that's captured from our building permits. So we're not doing any of the things that we're doing in a vacuum or making these decisions without your input. Bringing all of this stuff back to you, we're getting approval, we're also doing it from the perspective of being fiscally conservative. That's why we presented to you the options of the anniversary event. Did you want to scale it back? Did you want it to be less? But you all voted to keep it the same, if not better than it was last year, and so that's what we're doing.
Okay, yeah, and I think that the purpose of this is not to, to hash out everything that we voted on before. You wanted to say something, and I think we need to move on then to the, to go through all of this.
Okay, so I was, and when I go to these events, I speak to people, and we actually have a lot of non-residents that come to our events. I believe that we should increase the, the amount that we charge non-residents. And we can do that substantially.
Susan, we are, Susan's going to speak to that as we go through the events, but yes, we are looking at, at that as well.
Susan, do you want to start with the?
Actually, if you don't mind, I have some follow-up questions.
Oh, sure, sure, please, go ahead.
Took a lot of notes. A lot of the things that you've talked about, I think we all kind of very much understand how we can make that work. Some of the, some, but I have some questions so that we can develop the budget that's going to accurately reflect that. So for example, Vice Mayor, you mentioned charities and allotting an amount. Do we have a dollar amount in mind? Are we thinking five thousand dollars per, or?
So, so the previous, the previous budget was fifty thousand, so perhaps we could take the fifty thousand and divide it equally among the five of us? But, but we need to be very cognizant that we need to have a very clear criteria and a qualification process for these organizations to, to, to get, you know, the money. Also, we cannot have, perhaps, like what happened in the past, that you had two organizations where one person was involved in both of them, was in the board of directors, and they were getting forty percent of the budget. You know, they were getting ten thousand and ten thousand, that's forty thousand of, out of the fifty thousand. So we need to avoid those types of situations. Where on the other hand, I wanted to give a school seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for their media center, and that was denied. So we need to really have a clear path to how these charities are going to, are going to work. Okay, and it needs to be fair. So that, that's my take. And then obviously, I'll have my ten thousand, but it doesn't allow me to just give out the ten thousand however, which way I want. There's got to be a clear way and a process, and we need to vote on that perhaps, still. And it needs to go through a process, but there, there needs to be a criteria first. We've been talking about that for, for a few months now, but yeah. It's time to like, if we all want to reinstate charity, then we will have to have a discussion on that, yeah.
Okay, so for the ease of the document, we will have a program modification form in the budget document, so you can clearly see the, these types of things that we'll be adding based on this discussion, okay? Instead of it kind of being in there somewhere. Commissioner Stu, you mentioned teens and a youth committee. We had a meeting the other day with IPAL, and they do want to grow it into, they have a teen component named the Youth Development Council. I happen to be familiar because my husband used to do this. Is, would that suffice? Would something like that suffice? Are you looking for something greater than that?
I, I don't know IPAL, so, I mean, I don't know that specific program, so if you give me one information-
They have, they have a board, they have, you know, so, so it is a leadership committee, you know, they do have leadership opportunities within that, that PAL program.
I want to know a little bit more and probably, if, if they can go, when we go, for example, to the League of Cities conferences, if before that, they can have their, they can participate in the, in the competitions. They have different, like, really good, specific competitions, so I don't know, that's what I don't know.
So the, right, so my question is, do you want something specifically through the Florida League of Cities?
No.
So they can participate in that, or any type of teen leadership council that is city-run?
That allows them to participate in-
In any type of-
Correct, exactly, it doesn't need to be specifically that one, yeah.
Okay, good.
The problem I have with having the teen council through the PAL is that it includes Aventura. So we might have people from Aventura making decisions for Sunny Isles. I don't believe that's-
I don't think they make any decisions, it's just an opportunity for them, it's just for them-
For input that we might-
Well, we agreed that we would partner with them, so-
Yes, but as far as a youth council that makes decisions for Sunny Isles, or makes advisements to Sunny Isles.
It would not be an advisory committee, so like, for example, the YDC, they have leadership positions, but they're doing community service work, so they're basically, you know, voting on which community service work they'll do, things like that. And I think through the, the partnership, they would be equitable with both, both. But if you want a separate something, that's a whole different program, and that's why I was trying to get some clarification. Your goal is to have leadership opportunities for our teens.
Correct, and, and not for them to come back and give us like a, any recommendation.
It's not an advisory, right.
Not advisory. I want them to be able to participate and to, and to, there are so many resources. Right now, we are not getting those resources or giving those to our teenagers. So the idea will be to give them access to those resources, yeah.
And, understand, thank you.
They don't have to be an advisory committee, so they don't have to.
From the commission, if EV stations is not working out through FPL where we can get them for free, is there a desire to fund this through city funds?
No.
I, I support it. I support it, anything that, because there's been a lot of requests for this. Now, if it's going to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, I mean, obviously, we need to know how much. But this, there's been a very big push.
And that is probably where Commissioner Viscara was saying, that we can go early on to our congressman or representative and ask them for acquisitions and to put this money, what they're going to be fighting for in Tallahassee or even DC, and make sure that we have this need, these are your voters, you represent these people, to help us. We have our, Trump book, our lobbyists, to use our lobbyists. I, I believe there is a need, I had had those conversations, that's why I brought it up a few months ago. So we can probably use some of the resources and apply for grants, et cetera, that they are right there, available, and we have somebody writing grants for us in staff or-
We have a consultant for grant writing.
And it's a need basis, right?
Yes, on an, as needed basis.
Okay, okay, so precisely, so maybe if we can see what options are available, we have the need. And whatever we can do to, to make sure that we can go to the-
I have the direction I need, thank you.
Next question.
I have a question. Right now, do we have any idea what these EV stations are costing?
Yes.
For installation or ongoing usage?
Yes, the quick charge is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to five-hundred thousand dollars. And then you charge for it, so there is a, you know, you do get revenue from it.
Now you're charging.
What the breakpoint is, I don't know. And, I don't know, but one of our neighboring communities is going out to bid right now for that, so we're going to follow that closely, learn what they learn and, and see where we go from there, but I just wanted some kind of direction.
It was someone else's mistake either.
Right, correct. And then Mayor, you mentioned more community-focused planning. We met briefly this morning right after, and we have a way that we will open it up through the website. We will put it out on social media. One of the challenges that we have, and I'm sure you do too, is we plan a budget and then all these other things come up very last minute. So we have several examples that we could give you, but we won't waste your time in last-minute requests that we get from the public, as I'm sure you do too. So we are going to open up, we're going to put it out, have a seamless doc, they can fill it out so that we can consider it for this upcoming budget year, and then every year thereafter, we will have a, a open period, like where they can present their, their proposals for us to consider for the next budget year that we would then be able to bring to you at this philosophical discussion, say, next year. Does that-
Yeah, it basically is a, a mechanism that allows everyone an equal, an equitable way to, to access it so that they're not lobbying us individually. Because someone comes to see me and I tell them, you have to see every commissioner individually. And then I think that's when they kind of get dissuaded and they feel like nothing's going to happen. So as long as it's very clear, there's deadlines, so that it avoids us coming to you with, hey, I think we should do this because so-and-so, you know, came to me. There's a lot of good ideas, but ultimately, it would be your recommendation back to us as to what you think is the strongest program. So, yeah.
All right, very good.
That answers- Okay, so I think Vice Mayor needed us to leave soon, so he wanted to go first.
Yeah, so regarding the, the, the events, first of all, I'd like to see a cost attached. Perhaps we could add a column with the, with the cost for each, or the projected cost more or less. So we could really see what, what the cost per event is and, and the total cost of, let's say, having a year of events. I see the ones in orange that says not recommended. I'd like to, to know why. I mean, summer splash sounds good. But I don't know if it's a cost issue or if it's just logistical issue.
So this is one of those things that kind of came to us this, like, last month, earlier this month, to have like a carnival-style event at Gateway once a month in the summer months.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, I think people-
Who commented that?
It was a resident or a, somebody, a contractor.
Okay, okay.
Who, who met with staff and had brought it up. Our concern is, A, staffing, because we have full-blown summer camp during the summer and weather. So from our experience, events in the summer with afternoon storms always tend to get rained out. And then we have, we need to have time to refurbish our fields and our parks for what we call in-season, and so a lot of our residents travel during the summer, and it, it's less crowded, and that's our opportunity to do all of those kind of bigger refurbishment projects. But we put it on here because if it's something that there is a desire of the commission to do something like that, you know, let us, let us know. It does have a funding impact. We didn't put amounts on here because it was to be more philosophical.
No, no, I understand, but yeah.
Tie into what it is exactly that you're really looking for, and we don't have to go through this line by line. The goal here was to give you the information, let you take it back. A week from tomorrow, Friday, May third, I think, is the date. Please give this back to us, X-ing out anything you think is not interesting to, you know, or worthwhile.
It, it, it all seems interesting to me. Because, to be honest with you, I mean, you see like maybe six to seven events per, per month, right, more or less? Some of them, I, I don't think are not that costly, like the beach cleanup. Obviously, you have in October, Two Boogie by the Beach. Moving on to December, I see Art Basel event, the rooftop movie. And some of the ones in pink, the newer revised events, like the Florida Arbor Day Festival. I like to know more or less what those cost. Our fashion show, I mean, that, that can't be cheap either. So I, I would like to know more or less the cost. Because that way I could say, eh, no, if it's a million dollars, I'll scratch that out. That'll be the first one I scratch out, you know? So I think with some sort of, not an exact cost, but more or less in a range, I think it will help me.
So anything that is a new event on here would come to you as a program mod, where you would see the actual breakdown. This was more, kind of set up this way for you to realize, yes, beach cleanup is not a great expense.
Yeah.
But it's more a staffing situation.
Well, that's a good thing that we're doing too, it's, yeah.
I think to, to Vice Mayor's point, to have perhaps just a sense of what that staffing cost is. Because sometimes that could be more than the actual cost event. And, and, you know, just using that as an example, the, the beach cleanup, I know that, you know, that's open to everyone. That's not just our teenagers, and so are we potentially funding somebody else's volunteer hours? You know, because a lot of that is, is that as well. Maybe that gets cut down. If we're, if we're paying so, so much in overtime, like, does that require overtime, that sort of thing? Like, does that require overtime, that sort of thing? Okay, so you need this back from each of us by next Friday?
I'll tell you what, we'll give you a little extension, but again, we're we're developing our budget, literally going to work tomorrow. We have a meeting tomorrow based on this conversation. So we will put some numbers, Gail did have numbers on here. We kind of pulled them out because we don't want that to, we didn't really want it to sway. Nothing is a million dollars, but there are some more significant costs. So yes, fashion show looks like a lot, but it it's a, it's a scaled-down version. We're not having Dior or anything, you know, that's going to.
And having the light.
Built up, yeah, yeah. Florida Arbor Day is really a combination. We always do Arbor Day as a very minimal event with a school. This was to make it a more interactive event, try to get more people. So we'll give you a little more information about that, and then we'll give you until Monday. So you can work over the weekend like we do to 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 get that list back to us.
What is the best way for us to to bring this back to you? You literally want us to just cross things out?
We'd literally like for you to mark up this page.
Okay.
And then, you know.
And you're going to give us the cost first.
Attached, yes, we'll have that for you tomorrow, and then you'll have till the following Monday. And then anything you want to add, just add that. Please send it to us individually. Do not send it to.
No, absolutely. And and just before we end, again, as I started, I said, a lot of people are watching this on, you know, on TV or online. And residents, at least the ones that reached out to me, really wanted to be involved. And I explained to them that the best way is to just reach out to you if they have questions. What would be the best way for those that would like to have more information now, while there's an opportunity for them to voice their concerns, rather than, you know, obviously, they'd speak to us individually, but is there a mechanism? Is there a way for them to reach out to you as well?
I think we can come up with something. We'll work with media and find a way to get something out.
Yeah, so that it doesn't feel like it's it's in a vacuum, you know. I think that this has progressed to be much more interactive with every year, and so I'd like to just continue that if possible. And I'm not suggesting everyone needs to send in all of their requests, but just to have a better understanding and inclusivity.
Yes, we'll create something through media. And then the other part of it, Mayor, is if there's a resident that has a question, if they want to come in and sit down with us, we'll schedule time with them.
That's fantastic. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, everyone.